It's very nice. I'd like to welcome our guests this evening. And now Nancy, if you'd please call the roll.
More?
Here.
Tree?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
We have a call. Item number four, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at the city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Many members of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 6th, 2014. Approval of claims in the amount of, Joe Don?
These are the correct amounts.
Two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and ninety cents, and payroll expenses of one-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-eleven dollars and forty-five cents. Is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
Second.
Removed by Fisher, second by Hannaford. Any more discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Tree?
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number six are reports for boards and officers, and I'd like to start with the library report which you have before you. Of course, they've been busy and taking care of business as usual. Also, from that particular board, Audrey Presnell, longtime president of the board, has resigned officially, and Lynn Reed has consented to complete her term which expires in June of '17, and I'll be bringing his name before this board for approval of the next meeting. The Northwest Water Action Plan Team will meet Monday in Woodward, November the 3rd. The last meeting was in Alva on the 3rd of October. The Governor's Water Conference is being held in Oklahoma City on Wednesday and Thursday. I will be in attendance and will report back to the council. The Camp Alva Committee was shocked by Paul Kinsey's resignation, but will move forward starting with a discussion at the next airport board meeting. Joe Don?
Well, we've had a couple of different sanitation committee meetings since the last council meeting, and I would certainly invite the chairman or one of the members of that committee to talk about anything, or I'll try to fill in the gaps if they would like, or I can give a report.
Go ahead.
Okay. Basically, on the meeting of October 6th, we did review the bids for the sanitation transfer station, and elected to wait and get engineers' input before making any type of recommendation on those. Met again on October 15th at 10:00 a.m. to discuss the construction, what our options were for the transfer station. And upon, we will discuss some of those options a little bit later on during the meeting, but the committee did come back with a recommendation that they felt we should reject all the bids and proceed with other options. The main, the gist of the other options would be to break the project up into smaller components and try to get more local participation as part of that. And those were the two meetings. We will talk a little bit more about the sanitation committee recommendations later on in the AUA meeting. We did have a special library, a special cemetery board meeting that was concerning the discussion for a recommendation to city council to approve oil and gas lease for some property the cemetery has out in Alfalfa County. Basically, the recommendation at this point was for the city manager to continue negotiations as far as restrictions and requirements and pricing for that lease. So we are currently in discussions with Sandridge to see exactly what we could get done as a lease on that property. The airport board met. And, find my airport agenda. It was a pretty routine meeting. They did discuss the leasing of airport property for a proposed expo arena. There was no recommendation at that meeting to either approve or disapprove. It was mainly discussion. The airport board would like some additional information before making a decision on that. They did discuss and approve the 2015 early project development packet, and this would be the, what we're working on right now is a T-Hager taxiway extension project for the design portion of it for this year. Next year's project would be the construction part of that project. Also did make a recommendation to city council to approve the business manager to sign the professional services agreement with Garver Engineering, and that'll be a little bit later on during this meeting. The Alva Board of Adjustments met. I did not, I was not able to attend that meeting, but maybe Councilman Miller would be able to fill us in on about what transpired at that meeting.
We had one request for a lot coverage variance, as noted in the minutes. It was approved during the discussion. It was, it was decided that that would be allowed as that is zone R M6, which allows for mobile homes and trailers, and it's deemed that there were other structures in that neighborhood, that that building would not be a distraction to that neighborhood. The owner owns three lots, this property of the one that he was on, and two lots of budding undergrads, so it was not going to be any more of a distraction to that neighborhood by doing it, so it was approved.
We did have a meeting on the 15th for the Alva Recreation Center Board Meeting, and Councilman Fisher may want to discuss what happened at that meeting?
Just talk about the air conditioner finishing up. I think it's all finished, am I correct?
Yeah, it's all finished except for the payment of the retainage.
Right. And then that contract with Lockweston, we're still working on it, but it should be, I got an email on it today saying we propose to have it completed. At least our.
Has the work on the fields that we approved, the expenditure at last meeting been completed?
Yes. That was pretty much basically.
The tourism committee also, met also on the 15th. They had pretty, a routine, they took care of their routine business. They did approve funds not to exceed $6,000 for the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce/Tourism Center Secretary, and they also approved funds for permanent enhancements at the Alva Gun Range not to exceed $82,500. I know both of those were approved. I did attend on Friday the monthly Oklahoma Municipal League, Oklahoma Tax Commission Liaison Board Meeting. The major topic there and the major thing that the liaison board will take up with the Oklahoma Tax Commission this year is the revision of the, of the agreement that we have for the tax commission to collect sales and use tax for us. There are several issues with the contract that the board has and some other communities have. A lot of it stems around notification of refunds and how those, how that ought to be handled, and also the contract does provide for tax commission liaison for communities. And when we talk with communities around the state, nobody really knows who their liaison person is. So it's an effort to define that and have tax commission take care of some of those issues for us. So that'll be the gist of what we undertake over the next few months. Some of it may, some of that may have to have some legislative action, but that's still in discussions right now. As far as the city business manager's report goes, the, this is the second meeting of the month where I normally give our financial report. It does appear for the month of September that we should receive somewhere around $3.6 million. That'd be about 26% of our annual budget, and we are anticipating spending about $4.1 million, which is about 30% of our annual budget. And this comes at a point where the, you know, we've only completed about 25% of our budget year. When we look at our, when we compare our September revenues for 2014 to 2013, we can see that we're collecting about 3% less than what we did last year. The area that we're seeing, we're experiencing the biggest decline is in our transfers between funds. The reason for this decline is that last year we consolidated, when we reorganized our finances into the Municipal Budget Act, we consolidated a lot of those AUA funds, and that's where that, that variance is coming in at. If we back out those non-reoccurring revenues, we'll see that the city's actually anticipates collecting about 15% more this year than we did last year. The other area that we're seeing a decrease in besides transfers would be intergovernmental revenues, basically grants. We are collecting the less grants so far this year than we did last year. As far as our sales and use tax is concerned, we are experiencing right now about a 20% increase this year from last year, and that 20% increase actually gets us back to the levels we were at, we were seeing in 2011, 2012. The city's either spent or encumbered about $4.1 million, again, like I said, 30% of our annual budget. Personnel services, materials and supplies, and capital outlay are all indicating increases from the same timeframe as last year. Services, other services and charges, and debt service and transfers are showing decreases. The largest increase that we are experiencing is in capital outlay category. This is primarily because of purchases that were approved last budget year but paid for this budget year. If we back out what was approved last year but paid for this year, or affecting our cash flow this year, we see that we've only purchased or encumbered about $244,000 of this year's capital improvement budget, and that's out of a $2.4 million budget. We have several pending capital improvement items, such as the traffic signal project, which was approved at the last council meeting, the fire hydrant project, and the city is anticipating the purchase of a couple of cars which are in the budget for this year. Currently, the city of Alva is showing about a $484,000 expenditure over collection difference. As far as our projects are concerned, sanitation transfer station, we, like I said earlier, we have met twice. There were only two bidders, and we will have some more discussion on this later on in the meeting. The big thing I do want to point out to the, point out to the council is that one of the big items that drove our cost up was the, the site prep and the condition of the, the site where we were going to build the transfer station. Right now, it is covered, or has been covered in trees and grass clippings, tree limbs and grass clippings, and we had the pad site cleaned off for the surveyors to come in, for the bidders to come in and look at. But then as part of our discussions of how we needed to break it down, we had the engineers come out and restake it, and as they were restaking the site, there were people out there dumping tree limbs and grass clippings in the areas where we were staking it. So we cleaned off a spot to stake it so we could see where we were going to build, and people are dumping tree limbs and grass clippings and furniture there that we really need to do something different with because, I mean, the dumping of the furniture there can actually shut down our site because it's not a waste disposal site. It could shut down the whole thing. So we are looking at different options there. One of the things that I think we are going to explore and recommend ultimately is, because we do need to provide a place for the, for people to dump their tree limbs and their grass clippings, and we've got an old clarifier that has a hole that where we had tried to knock it down. We're going to clean off that opening and let people be able to go in there and dump their grass clippings and their tree limb clippings in this concrete barrier, which will allow for us to dispose of it a lot easier, and basically get our current area where they're, where we're going to build our transfer site cleaned off, and then we'll do something to fence it off to try to, you know, it'll cost us a little bit to go buy some of that orange fencing or something to try to discourage people from doing that, but give them an option. We did, as far as our personnel needs are concerned, we talked about this a little bit later, a little bit last council meeting, but on the finance committee for October 6th, they did decide to initiate the, some new incentives to maybe attract new employees. One of the big things they authorized, and it went out to employees at their last paycheck, which was last Thursday, was to allow for a one-time per applicant stopping of $150 if an employee recommends an applicant that the city hires. We've put some guidelines on that, on how we could identify that, and the employees have been informed of that with a memorandum that went out in their check, check stub. We're also going to be, we're putting the final touches on being able to offer direct deposit for our employees, which seems to be, with some of the employees I've talked with, it seems to be something they really want to have. This is a little-to-no-cost benefit that we can provide, so we're trying to get that project kicked off. We're putting the final touches on that now. More than likely, we will pick a few people to start that program with before we open it up to the entire city, the population of the city employees, just so that we make sure that we've got our system down and it is working properly before we implement it and everybody jumps on board and something goes haywire and people don't get checks when they think they're supposed to. So we're trying to get those details worked out. I did meet with Bill, staff at Bill Johnson concerning the revamping of what I'm going to classify the Sandridge Hire Program, and this is where we are, we interview offenders that are fixing to be released for jobs here within the city of Alva. This seemed to work out well for Sandridge. Of course, they, Sandridge had a whole lot of other benefits to go along with that, and there's some few benefits, there's some few details that we need to work out before we actually kick this program off with BJCC, and those will be discussed at the Personnel Committee meeting tonight. Staff is working on a non-smoking ordinance which would enhance and strengthen our resolution that was passed in 2013. This was discussed at the last Park and Building Committee meeting, and they decided that it would be prudent to have this additional enforcement. If we structure the ordinance correctly, and staff is working on that, once we have it, once we have the language in it that we feel needs to be there for the city, we'll submit that to the city attorney for his approval and get any comments that he has, but I felt like we needed to have a structure on it before we gave it to the city attorney just to say, "Mr. Attorney, what do you think?" If we do get this ordinance passed, it would qualify the city for an additional, for additional funds in the form of grants up to about $45,000. Already touched a little bit on the leasing of minerals in Alfalfa County. City is still working on streets. Currently, they were putting the touches, they were, the city's currently putting the final touches on the slurry seal project on Barnes. Crews did run into a problem when the slurry machine broke a belt. Took us a week to get the belt in, a little bit to get it on, get, get the machinery calibrated. They did finish up to Longfellow School. They will be kicking back off. Since that time, they've been working on potholes around town and doing some repainting. They will be hitting the, the slurry project to finish up Barnes and to work on some other projects in town that need to get worked on this week. And mayor and council, that would be my manager's report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments for Joe Don? Item number seven, discussion and action on ordinance number 2014-045, amending ordinance 2014-043 for annexing certain territory to the city of Alva Woods County, Oklahoma, by correcting the legal description contained therein, repealer, and declaring an emergency. Joe Don, what was wrong with that last legal?
Well, we hired Taylor and Associates to get us the legal description for that area, and they made an error in their wording. It should have been southeast, the southeast quarter of Section 29. That's what they put in, and it should have factored in the southeast quarter of Section We did get that correction made. We did, and the area was actually caught by the county assessor when they were entering in the, entering in the information and brought to our attention through them. We did get the, get the correction made. We did go verify this information with the county assessor before asking you to approve it. It has been verified by them as the correct legal description for that annexation area.
So we are requesting that you pass this with a motion, amending ordinance number 2014-043 for annexing certain territories. Is there a motion that this amendment take place?
I move we approve ordinance 2014-045, amending ordinance 2014-043.
Motion by Brown?
Second.
Second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Tree?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Item number eight is discussion, excuse me, have to have an emergency.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion that an emergency be declared?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Benson. Is there any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Tree?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eight, discussion and action to approve or disapprove Resolution Number 2014-086, amending the fiscal year 2014/2015 annual budget to reflect the $5,000 grant from Walmart for equipping a new, for equipping new vehicles for the police department. Joe Don, what's that about?
Well, the police department has in their budget a, two police cars, one for, or two police vehicles, one to be paid for out of the APTD account, the drug fund that we have, the other to be paid for out of the general fund. The one they would like to purchase out of the drug fund is a Tahoe. They had only budgeted $32,500 for that vehicle. The vehicle and equipment would cost closer to the neighborhood of $37,500. So there was a shortfall there. They did go and visit with, Walmart did make application twice with Walmart, and they both times received a $2,500 grant for the purchase of this equipment for, for the Tahoe that we would like to purchase. And we need to amend the budget to reflect that additional income and those additional expenses.
Is there a motion then to approve Resolution Number 2014-086?
So moved.
Motion by Miller?
Second.
Second by Hannaford. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Tree?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item number nine, discussion and action to authorize the mayor to sign the 2011/2012 Workmen's Compensation Plan refund voucher agreement in the amount of $47,772.61. That's under tab number nine. Joe Don, are we taking that in the form of a check or are we going to apply it to our?
That is our option. My recommendation would be to take that in the form of a check, put that back into our general fund. We would have to make a budget amendment for that at a later date, and budget for that revenue and expenditures that we saw needed to be made with that money. There are other options. We do have the option to have the entire amount go against our quarterly payment, which would reduce, you know, that would make one quarterly payment plus some, so we'd shorten our, we'd shorten the amount of time we had to pay the, our payment, the number of our payments would shorten by one, at least, one full one. We also have the option to put it in our escrow account, being, to be held by O-MAG and to be used at a later time at our request. If we put it in the escrow account, we will reserve, we will receive the interest earnings on that money that's held, but at this time, it would be my recommendation that we ask them to issue us a refund check.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the 2011/2012 Workers' Compensation Plan refund voucher agreement in the amount of $47,772.61, and take that in a check form.
Motion by Benson.
Second.
Second by Hannaford. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Tree?
Yes.
Item number 10, discussion and action to approve or disapprove the recommendation from the Alva Airport Commission to authorize the city business manager to enter into an agreement for professional service with Garver Engineering for Airport Improvement Project Joe Don?
This is our 2015 AIP project. It will be the construction of our taxiway extension. This year, it's design-only. The estimate, the estimated fees for this project for engineering are going to be $99,700. They will be included if, this is a project that will take place next year, so these fees will be part of that budget. They are reimbursable through the FAA grant, so in actuality, our cost of that $99,000 will only be about $9,900. The airport commission did agree to authorize recommendations to the city council at their last meeting, and so I And so I would be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have at this time over this.
I might note, it appears that the number that's in number ten, agended item, is that zero, zero, one on the actual contract is zero, one, one.
Oh, yeah.
So when we make that motion, it needs to be to approve that project with the zero, one, one number included.
Is everybody making note of that? Is there a motion then to approve this agreement?
I move we approve the Airport Commission or the authorization of the city business manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Garber Engineering for AIP Project three dash four zero dash zero, 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 three dash zero, one, one dash two, zero, nine, five.
Motion by Brown?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tree?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any remarks or inquiries by our guests this evening? Hearing none, are there any remarks or inquiries by council members? Hearing none, we'll close that meeting and open the meeting of the utility authority. Item number one is called to order. Item number two, roll call please, Nancy.
Miller?
Here.
Tree?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number five is discussion on a future resolution to establish a utility billing and collection policy. Joe Don?
Yes, both the Finance Committee and the Water and Sewer Committee have discussed this utility billing and collection policy. The reason for this policy would be to get, to give staff some guidelines as to how we would collect, go about collecting or billing, collecting billing and turning on and off Some of the things that this, this policy would change if enacted would be, it would increase the, the deposit amount from eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents to a hundred and fifty dollars. So it, so if somebody coming in would, that would need to put up a deposit, would need to put up a hundred and fifty dollars versus the eighty-nine, sixty. But it would also allow for the city of Alva to, or the Alva Utility Authority to accept letters of credit from, from similar utility companies. So, for example, I move into Alva for the first time and need to turn on, as long as I can provide a letter of, a letter of good credit from a, from my previous city or my previous utility, I would be able to turn that utility on at no cost. It would also allow that this, if a city service is disconnected for non-payment for more, more than three times during any twelve-month period, an additional deposit equal to the average of the prior six months billing would be required before service would be reestablished. It just puts in riding our billing cycle. We'll have one billing cycle per month. We read, we read customers from approximately the third calendar day to the twentieth calendar day of each month. The due dates would not change. Utility bills are still due on the, would still be due on the fifteenth. It provides those, those, that written guideline. It does also provide for delinquent dates. Anything after the fifteenth would be, would incur a late charge of ten percent. It would change payment extensions. Currently, the, you know, people come in for an extension to pay, it's really up to the person that is waiting on them as to whether or not that is the given one or not. But it would make for a limit of four arrangements per utility customer per twelve-month period. So, you know, if you could basically be late and come in and get an extension up to four times during a twelve-month period. It would change the cutoff procedures a little, well, significantly. Right now, delinquent accounts with balances greater than sixty dollars are not processed for cutoff. This lowers that to twenty. And it also, it also allows for the resumption of services and that the delinquent amount must be paid, a disconnection fee of thirty-five dollars must be paid, and an additional deposit, if applicable, would be paid in full before we turn on. One of the, the two big things there that it brings out is that it lowers the amount that we will cut off for from sixty dollars to twenty, and it increases the amount of the disconnect fee from five dollars to thirty-five dollars. It also allows for some additional fees that would be applicable should a customer come in and want to have their service turned on on a weekend or a holiday, and it'll allow for a media, a fee for immediate cutoffs. If a customer comes in before one o'clock, we will, we will try to, we'll get them processed within that business day for turn-ons. If they come in after one o'clock, that service order will be slated for the next day, but if the customer has to have it turned on that day, there'd be a thirty-five dollar fee for that. And if somebody would need to be either turned on or turned off during, on a weekend or a holiday, it would be, a service charge of seventy dollars would be, would come into effect. I don't see these being utilized that often. We don't have a lot of requests to be turned on on a weekend. We don't have, you know, we don't have a lot of people coming in that's got to be turned on immediately. So there's some flexibility there that I think, I really don't see those fees as being a hindrance or to anybody, but it allows for them if the customer desires them. But those are the big, the major things that this policy would change versus what we actually do right now. And the other thing to really point out is that we don't have anything as far as a lot of this is concerned in writing right now, and that would be one of the big benefits to this is that we've actually got it in writing now and approved by this council as to how we're going to conduct our business. I'd be happy, and this is for discussion, so if there's anything that, you know, you have concerns about, anything you think's missing, anything that you think needs to be, you know, anything there that I've said is too strict.
Joe Don, you talked about the extensions that we delivered four times, and you said that kind of depended on who they were dealing with and they made the decision.
Well, right now, it's depending on who they're dealing with.
So this will take care of that.
Right. This, right now, you know, whenever you come in, you know, it's just, you, you know, you wanted to, you know, you want an extension? Yeah, I want an extension. It also makes them come in and get it. A lot of times, we were getting just phone calls, hey, I need to extend my services. This limits those extensions to four per customer, per twelve-month period.
Do, are we, do we experience a high level of this, but that's currently, I mean, if you were to guess an average per month, are we talking five, six?
At the sixty dollar, at the sixty dollar rate?
At our current time.
Yeah, at our current time, we have anywhere from twenty-five to forty disconnects a month.
And that's if they're exceeding sixty dollars.
That's if they're exceeding sixty dollars.
So we intend to quadruple that by dropping it to twenty.
It would, it would substantially, I think it would substantially increase it initially. I mean, initially, there, when we, we had an error in our, in our reports, where, that went out on cutoffs, our clerk had put in twenty dollars instead of sixty once, and the list was a hundred and twenty people long.
So I guess that's, I mean, we're doing things to increase the consequence for having violated the disconnect or the non-payment, but then we're going to take it from, we're going to reduce what was sixty dollars of non-payment down to twenty dollars and increase the consequence for doing it, so we're really going to pay.
The sixty dollars, the sixty dollars come up because that's pretty much a minimum bill, ninety percent, a lot of our customers, all they get is a nine, a minimum bill. So if you don't get cut off this time for sixty dollars, then when we go to cut you off next time, you're actually a hundred and twenty into us on a deposit of eighty-nine dollars or less.
Right, but we're, so I guess, to me, we're, we're hitting the same issue with almost every fee change that we've got proposed here. We're attacking the very same issue. We're raising the deposit to cover the cost of somebody not paying the bill because that's the purpose of the deposit, and then we're raising the cost, the cost to reconnect you because that's the purpose is to cover that cost, and then we're dropping the cost that you get behind before we're going to charge you those costs. I mean, we, we seem to, in three, maybe four different locations here, attack one single issue with increases to the utility user.
Yeah, and most policies.
What you recommended, Mr. Brown? Well, I'm just, I'm just curious if there's reasoning that was put to that, or, I mean, if we're going to go from, to a hundred and fifty dollar deposit, if I'm behind by sixty bucks and you've got my deposit of a hundred and fifty, you cut me off and you take my sixty bucks out of it, right? So why drop it down to twenty dollars when you're going to just increase the number of disconnects that you've got to contend with? I mean, you're going to, you've sent twenty-five, right now, it's twenty-five to thirty disconnects a month, you're going to raise that to a hundred and twenty people on the list so that our, our water department guy is running around while doing all those disconnects? When we've already raised the deposits here to cover that expense, why would we want to drop and increase the number of disconnects that we're going to have to incur?
Well, and the, the thought process behind that was to, most of those people that we disconnect, come right back in the next day and pay their bill, or that same day, pay their bill so that they can get turned back on. It is, it's, it's an effort to, but, you know, then there's the, the people that are skating on it for another month. But it's an effort to improve our cash flow and to make sure that we get paid for our services in a timely manner is the, is the purpose of it.
Right, I understand, I understand. All of the other fees, the, the changing of that non-payment amount from sixty to twenty doesn't make sense to me, and that everything else here accounts for the missing or the loss or the disconnect requirement. We're making up all the monies for that, but yet then we're setting ourselves up to have to do more of those services, more disconnects and more turn-ons every month. So you'd just like to see number five go away and leave it at sixty dollars basis? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my thinking, is everything else there is compensating for the fact that that is currently perceived as too high based on the fact that before we weren't collecting enough to cover it in a deposit or anywhere else, but now we're going to raise the deposits, we're going to raise everything else, the reconnect fees and all of those things are going up. You know, if you raised the deposit to a hundred and fifty and the reconnect fee is thirty-five, you're at a hundred and eighty-five dollars and the average bill was eighty-some dollars or sixty-some dollars, you're still not coming in the behind position if you leave it at the sixty dollars. And I just think, I mean, I think twenty dollars behind on, is going to hit a certain population of people, and it's just compounding the burden that they have.
And make more work for staff, city staff.
That's what I was going to say, it doesn't increase, we're already in charge of staff, it's going to increase for doing fifty. Everything else here, I think, works well. You're going to have to go twenty-five times turn it off, and then twenty-five times turn it on to a two-hundred and forty.
I think the first time, yeah, but, I mean, eventually, people will start learning that that's the cutoff, you know. Now that people know, I've got, you know, they're not going to cut me off for sixty bucks. So now I'm got two months billing and then the third, then working on my third month before I actually get cut off. But, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, this was just a proposal, this was brought up for discussion, so.
Right, and that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'm fine with leaving it at sixty.
I think you're also going to fix that, that same problem from taking from five dollars to thirty-five dollars.
That's been, needed to be addressed for a long time.
That's going to help a lot when you go out there and disconnect them.
Yeah, I mean, five dollars doesn't.
After paying thirty-five bucks, they're not going to be late again, probably.
Yeah, five dollars, it doesn't pay the cost for us to send somebody out to do a reconnect on it.
Hey, Joe Don?
Yeah.
How, our, our average bill is what, fifty-five?
Fifty-five to fifty-seven dollars.
That's a minimum, right.
That's a minimum bill.
So why not drop it to fifty bucks? Why go all the way to twenty? How many times does somebody owe us twenty? I mean, to me, if you just dropped it to whatever the minimum is, nobody can ever get two months out.
Well, and, and.
No more than a month.
Well, a minimum bill differs between what's inside and outside, inside limits versus outside city limits. If you leave it at the sixty dollar rate, the way Mr. Brown has suggested, that's kind of, that's about where we should be at for that minimum bill. I mean, outside city limit rate's going to be fifty-seven to fifty-eight dollars, and the inside's going to be fifty-five, so if you leave it at the sixty dollar level, you're about at that minimum bill.
Is there, I mean, I guess my other question is, do we have chronic disconnects?
We do, we have the same people on our list all the time. And that's, and that's with any community. Any community I've been in, it's not just Alva, you deal with, you know, staff spends ninety-five percent of their time dealing with five percent of the customers, and it's the same five percent all the time. I mean, it may vary, it may vary a little bit from cutoff to cutoff, but basically, it's the same five percent all the time.
I hope the churches are listening because they're going to be soliciting for a lot more donations to turn on water bills. Because if you do, if you do that kind of a change, that's where it's impacting, it's, I don't know that, but. It may, it may affect them, you know, we still got to be able to run our business at, at a break-even point anyway. I, I don't disagree with that one bit. But right now, I've got numbers here that, for me to understand more of how we arrived and where we're at with these numbers and why we're feeling the need to make this adjustment, I don't feel like, right now, I understand it well enough, and I can make the time to meet with Joe Don to.
Well, and that was the point of this, I mean, this isn't, here's an action item, is to get the discussion out and try to fill out what the questions are so that we can answer the questions.
After, after listening to Mr. Brown and thinking about it, I think we ought to leave number five at sixty dollars instead of twenty, that's my opinion. I think we're just going to, hopefully, we'll take the part of that late fee out of the equation when we charge them more to go disconnect them and rehook them up and stuff, and. But right now, I've got numbers here that, I mean, I, for me to understand more of how we arrived at where we're at with these numbers and why we're feeling the need to make this adjustment, I don't feel like, right now, I understand it well enough. And I can make the time to meet with Joe Don to...
Well, and that was the point of this. I mean, this, and he was an action item, is to get the discussion out and try to feel out what the questions are so that we can answer the questions.
After, after listening to Mr. Brown and thinking about it, I think we ought to leave number five at sixty dollars instead of twenty. That's my opinion. I think we're just going to, hopefully, we'll take part of that late fee out of the equation when we charge them more to go disconnect them and rehook them up and stuff and fix part of that. That would be my thought.
I'm not too crazy about number two either, Brian.
Well, and I was, um, just because they give us a good number, what did you say?
Two.
Number two, and that, that is to allow, to require an additional deposit. My narrative says three times, yeah, three, if they, they would be required to put up an additional deposit if they had been disconnected for non-payment more than three times during any twelve-month period. So if they are cut off three times, then...
Or turn them back on that fourth time, they're going to require a bigger deposit.
They're, a, a bigger deposit of an average of their last six months of bills. And that is put there to help protect us from getting stuck with a bill, an unpaid bill. Because like I said, by the time we actually cut somebody off, they're about three months into us for water bills.
If we schedule disconnect at sixty dollars non-payment, that means I got my bill, I didn't pay it by the tenth, you're going to give me notice, you're going to disconnect me and shut me off. How do I end up being three months behind at that point?
Because I give you a notice at sixty, at fifty dollars that I'm not going to cut you off. So I don't come in and pay. I didn't get cut off. I got charged, I got charged a dis, I got charged a, 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 a late fee. But my, but that was after the fact, after the cutoff date of fifteenth. So now I'm into it till the next month of another minimum bill of sixty dollars. So now I'm a hundred and twenty dollars and it's the fifteenth of that month. And then we go cut them off. Our billing, our reading is from the third to the twenty-second or thereabouts, third to the twentieth. So by the time I go out and read, get you actually cut off, I'm about three months into the bill.
How much would they have to pay if they get the service? Would you say on the average of, if they wanted to get connected again, they paid the bill and get it connected?
And then it would be, if, if they had gone past the, uh, three times, it would be an average of their six, of six months' worth of bills. So a six-month average.
So if they've been running sixty dollars a month?
For six months, it'd be sixty, it'd be an additional sixty dollars.
Does, does our u, our tracking system allow us to pull the last twenty-five disconnects and run what their average usages were so that we can see?
We've probably got, we've probably got that in our bill. We, we save our reports like that, we've probably got that. I don't know that I can go back and reprint them as a report, I can probably go pull the reports.
I mean, some of my concern is, I understand we have a need to have policy that dictates how we perform the functions of this. And I agree that that's important and we should have. But I have a, a very strong sense that these disconnect offenders that are chronic, it doesn't matter, folks, if you're going to hit them with a hundred and fifty dollars every time you have to send them a new deposit. You know, you're saying we no longer can provide to a certain category of people. It's, and I understand policies and rules and let's cover the expenses. But I'd really like us to make sure those numbers are doing just that, covering the expenses. And because I don't believe this is curing a problem of disconnecting. I don't think this is going to attack that issue. What it's going to do is going to cause those that are already struggling with disconnects to have even greater struggles. Is my, that's my opinion of what this is going to cause. It's not going, yeah, we need to cover expenses, absolutely. But let's make sure the numbers are set up and structured to do just that.
You mean, that's like going to the doctor and paying the bill and then having to have a prescription? On top of that? Well, this was for discussion, so if you have questions or suggestions, please meet with the city manager at your convenience and discuss that as Mr. Brown is going to do. Any further discussion? If not, then we'll look at item number six, discussion and action to reject all bids for the sanitation transfer station. Joe Don?
Uh, yes, this was the recommendation for the sanitation committee and the recommendation from our engineers. Due to the cost, the increased level of funding that it would require would be to reject all bids. And I feel like we need to do that as one vote.
Is there a motion then to reject the bids for the transfer station?
So we...
A motion by Miller?
Second.
No, a motion by Hannaford? Second by Crete? Any discussion? Clerk McCall, roll.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Crete? Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Brown? Yes.
Fisher? Yes.
Item number seven, discussion and action to authorize the city business manager to continue working with city engineers on alternatives for the construction of the sanitation transfer station. That's under tab number seven.
And yes, as we, as we've talked about a little bit earlier tonight, is that we felt that it was necessary to, at least have you acknowledge that we will continue working on alternatives to get this sanitation transfer station constructed. The major discussion we've had up to this point with engineers and with the sanitation committee is to break this project down into smaller components, thus allowing it the possibility for a larger bid pool. This could allow for more local bidders and ultimately lower the cost of the construction. The current plan is to break down the project into at least six different sections. These sections would include site and dirt work, concrete work, building erection and construction, electrical, site piping and water line construction, and tow buildings. Some of this stuff, we're, you know, upon the sanitation committee's reference and referral was to maybe contact the county to see what they may be able to help us with. I have tried at least a couple of times to get ahold of our county commissioner for that area and have yet been able to make touch, make contact with him. But see how they may be able to partner with us on this deal. Concrete work, if some of the concrete people are, and local people can do this type of work, maybe they can help, maybe they can put in a lower bid if they're not having to require some of the bid bonds and things like that that are required for the larger bid. Building erection, there may be businesses in town that would be interested in that portion of it versus the whole thing. And so it's certainly going to take a little bit more of staff's time, but I think it's well worth the time spent trying to get this down to a more manageable and feasible project. And I'd certainly, Councilman Benson was unable to attend the last sanitation committee meeting because of prior commitments. But Councilwoman Crete, Council, Councilman Hannaford were both there and I'd certainly invite them to make any comments that they would choose to make over our meeting that we had on the fifteenth and what some of these, what their thoughts about breaking this down into different sections would mean.
Just like you said earlier, we're going to go through the site work that was somewhere more wanting to charge, even though my construction thought it was a little, a little crazy, especially after we went out and looked at the site. So it just made sense to break it up and see if we can do it to obviously cheaper, three, three, four hundred dollars or something. And give some of the local businesses opportunities to build.
Sort of like youbuildit.com. Is there a motion then to authorize the city manager to continue working with the engineers to try to solve this dilemma?
So moved.
Motion by Hannaford?
Second.
Second by Crete? Any discussion? Clerk McCall, roll.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Fisher? Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that's the last item on that agenda, so we'll open the lead of the Economic Development Authority. Item number one, call to order, and second is the roll of call, Nancy?
Brown?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Here. Brown? Benson?
Here.
Valencia?
We have a quorum. Item number three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a duty nature normally approved AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 6th, 2014. And B, approval of claims in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four cents and payroll expenses of five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Is there a motion that this consent agenda be approved?
No move.
A motion by Benson?
Second.
Second by Hannaford? Any discussion? Clerk McCall, roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.